Call the roll, please.
Can't hear you, Sharon.
I think. You're not muted, but I can't hear you.
Still can't hear you.
I can do the roll call, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like me to.
Yeah, go ahead. Sharon, go ahead and figure out your thing if you can, and we'll.
I got you, Sharon. I'll cover it. Councilwoman Wengert.
Here.
Councilmember Hughes.
Here.
Councilmember Richards.
Here.
Vice Mayor Derwin.
Here.
Mayor Als.
Here. Okay. That will bring us to oral communications. I will. Just remind everyone, two things. First, the speaker limit on oral communications is three minutes. And. Actually, Jeremy, can I share? I can share my screen. Hold on. I'm gonna just briefly post the public meeting decorum policy. Passed earlier this year. Just a reminder. Any person while addressing government body who makes slanderous, impertinent, or profane remarks interrupts another speaker, whistles, yells, disturbs, or displays disruptive behavior that impedes the orderly conduct of meeting shall be asked to stop. So again, just please, everyone, be respectful. With that, I believe for oral communication, I believe Mary Ann wanted to say something. I will go to you first. Go ahead, Mary Ann.
Thank you, Jeff. I just wanted to give a brief shout out to all the heroes who worked behind the scenes. Excuse me, during the critical early days of the CZU Lightning Complex fire. The smoke is really getting to me. So I would like to acknowledge Chief Rob Lindner. Chief Rob Lindner from the Woodside Fire Protection District, Captain Christina Corpus and her local deputies from the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office, Kevin Rose and Jeff Norris from the San Mateo County OES, Jonathan Cox from CAL FIRE, the Portola Valley Town Public Works Team, Howard Young, Scott Weber, Chuck McAllister, and Justin Bixby, Carrie Chin, our Portola Valley Communications and Community Engagement Analyst, the Neighborhood Watch Captains and the SERP Division Leaders, the ongoing year-long effort by the Woodside Fire Protection District and our Public Works Team to clear the ladder fuels from the town roads, and finally to Jeremy Dennis, the Portola Valley Town Manager, who literally worked 24/7 to make sure he had the most up-to-date information for us. And I know this because I believe I texted him very, very late in the evening or early in the morning once. On behalf of the entire Town Council, I want to thank you folks for your unwavering dedication to keeping us all safe in these very dark times. It is so comforting to know that when crisis strikes, you are all there for us. You always have our backs. So again, much gratitude. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. And yes, I echo all of that. One more thing I meant to mention is that today staff asked me, there was an error in the preparation for item five, the conflict of interest code. So we were going to, we're going to pull that from the agenda and bring that back on the 23rd so it can be fixed. All right, I see two hands up in public comment. Rita, go ahead.
There you go, Rita.
There is an item, the item that you just pulled from the consent calendar, what I'd like that to be in the next time that it's there is to be an agenda item so that the residents can understand exactly why the changes had happened as an explanation on that resolution. It just says that it's being changed because of that one new person, but there are a lot of people on that list that have changed from a level two to a level one on the disclosures. And so I think there should be some kind of public explanation on why. So thank you.
Okay, noted. Mary has her hand up. Go ahead, Mary.
Hold on, Mary. There you go. You may need to unmute at your end, Mary.
I just wanted to echo Mary Ann's comments. I think I wanted to say thank you for everybody's courage. I think as a doctor, this kind of stress brings out the worst and the best in people. And you all have shown a lot of courage and a lot of perseverance in your leadership roles. And I think we're all very grateful for that. All, everybody has, including those who volunteer on the various committees and those of us who stand by and watch. And want to just thank you for that. But my particular comments were about the wonderful work that's happening, and I applauded along the Alpine Scenic Corridor. We gratify, I am gratified to see that the Stanford Forestry Group is doing a sensitive job in decreasing ladder fuels along a half mile of our Alpine Scenic Corridor. One of our really signature places in town. With considerable amount of sensitivity and respect for vulnerable flora and fauna. And it's of particular excitement for me that the presence of, in this extraordinary landscape of sandstone outcroppings and plateaus, Stanford is recognizing the presence of prehistoric, of an important prehistoric site for indigenous people. And I'm looking forward and hoping to have it confirmed that this is how this is being done. And hope that we will have the disclosure of how that investigation proceeds. We don't need to know what they find. We just need to know that it's been looked for. So I think it's really, I just again want to thank you for your attention and for your courage. You need to know that the town is behind you.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, seeing no other public comments, we'll move on to.
Mr. Mayor, if I, we did receive an email earlier tonight that doesn't look like the resident who emailed it in is here right now. It was from Kristy Corley, and just to paraphrase her question, she wanted any information on the cause of the fire that occurred near Alpine Club over the last week, I think it was. And I talked to Woodside Fire Protection District Chief a little earlier this evening. And there's no information right now. They're actually not the lead agency at Santa Clara County Fire. So I'll reach out to them. But if there had been any update, the chief would have had it at that point. But as soon as we have information, we'll get it out. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for that update, Jeremy. All right. In that case, we will, with no more public comment, we will start with the presentation. This is a letter from me to the council nominating Rebecca as our submission for the Small Town America Civic Volunteer Award. You should have, the letter should be in your, you saw in your agenda packet. Jeremy, did you want to put something up, or are we? Are we just talking? I wasn't sure.
I can put up a little information about the organization if you give me just a moment while you speak.
Yeah, so we got, we were, the small town, sorry, the Small Town America Civic Volunteer Ward, the group reached out to us a couple of weeks ago. They basically were looking for volunteers from towns of under 5,000 people. They want to select 100 of them nationwide for outstanding volunteer service to local government. And as you see in the letter, we nominated Rebecca. She's been serving the town for many years, mostly, I mean, many, many roles. She is the, she's the moderator of the Portola Valley Forum, which has been incredibly valuable resource for everyone for communication in Portola Valley and our surrounding areas. Also, she serves on multiple committees, in particular, the Sustainability Committee right now. And during COVID, she actually helped organize the network of volunteers that are helping neighbors get groceries or medications and other things. So I thought Rebecca was a great, was a good person to pick. I just wanted to make sure you all concurred with that. And so what happens from here is if you all agree to it, then I will nominate her, Jeremy and I will go to the civic volunteers and nominate her for that award, and we will, hopefully she will be named. Are there any questions? Mary Ann.
I'm sorry, I keep, I'm continually mad at my son because he has insisted that I am up to date on everything. And now I have to use a little mouse to push, to get the hand button up, and I can't do it. Yes, absolutely. Yes, 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 yes. She's the most extraordinary volunteer. She is perfect for this award.
I, okay. Any other comments on this? I don't believe, I don't think I need a motion for this. I can just, as long as everyone sort of consents to it, I'm just going to go ahead and do it. Is that reasonable?
Yes.
Okay, then we will go ahead and do that. Thank you, and I will keep you posted. Hopefully she will be selected. Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda. Item four, item five is being delayed till the 23rd. Does anyone want to pull anything else from the consent agenda?
Through the chair, items two and three.
Items two and three. Anything else anyone wants to pull? Okay, with that, I could take a motion to approve items four and six on consent?
Moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, moved by Craig, seconded by Mary Ann. Sharon, roll call vote, please. You're muted.
Councilmember Wengert.
Hi.
Councilmember Richards.
Hi.
Councilmember Hughes.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Derwin.
Hi.
Mayor Als.
Hi. Okay, item two, Anne, go ahead.
All right, I have three corrections to make to the minutes, and on red page 14, 17, and 18, I was referred to as Commissioner Wengert.
Huh.
So just to correct the record, because there were three, three times it was done. And that's it for the minutes.
Okay, any other corrections on the minutes? Okay, I don't see any. I can take a motion to approve the revised minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Anne, seconded by John. On, roll call vote.
You're muted, Sharon.
Give up. Councilmember Wengert.
Hi.
Councilmember Richards.
Hi.
Councilmember Hughes.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Derwin.
Hi.
Mayor Als.
Hi. Okay, and motion passes. Item three, Anne, go ahead.
Yeah, and this is a general comment, and I know we're still working on the newest version of the warrant list, and I think it'll probably evolve even more over time. But this one actually is a little more substantive in that it's not as much about format as it is about sort of looking at some of these items. And in particular, I'll pull you back to red page 24. And if you go to that page and you look at the City of Redwood City IT support, and the comment really is about the timing for these billings, because this one is fiscal year 1920. So we're already two to three months behind and into the new cycle. And there was, there were others on page 25. You'll see a series under Nolte Associates that are even more
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Dated, if you will, and some, I mean extraordinarily so, October of 2018. And similarly, on page 18, there's, excuse me, one more. And that is Baird and Driscoll. And again, I think it, what I would just encourage is, is that we try as much as possible to have minimal amounts of these. And so maybe it's a matter of notices to the vendors, you know, get your invoices in. Don't, don't, don't be dawdling in sending them in three to six months later, because some of them are not insignificant relative to what adjustments would need to be made to last year's budget. So they jumped out at me when I was going through this. So that's why I wanted to make the comment specifically when you could see those three very good examples of it.
Okay, Jeremy, did you want to comment? We actually had, Jeremy and I had a short discussion about one of those, so I'll let Jeremy comment on it.
Yeah, through the, through the chair, and we share your frustrations as it relates to those late vendor items. Some of those are that. The one that the mayor and I talked about earlier today was the City of Redwood City. And that was, that was a fairly unique circumstance related to COVID expenses, the COVID work that they needed to do over the last couple of months, and it came in fairly late. But it is an ongoing conversation we have with some of our vendors to get these in on time. This was, this is the last warrant list that could include items from 1920. Certainly share your frustration. Appreciate the comments.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, in that case, I can take a motion to approve item three.
Move to approve. A second.
Okay, moved by Mary Ann, seconded by Anne. Sharon, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wengert.
Hi.
Councilmember Richards.
Hi.
Councilmember Hughes.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Derwin.
Hi.
Mayor Als.
Hi. Okay, motion passes. That brings us to the regular agenda, item seven, presentation from Zone Haven on evacuation planning software. Jeremy, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Als, members of the council. We're delighted to bring this item to you tonight, and the timing could not be more appropriate. This was actually scheduled for this particular evening approximately two and a half, three months ago. This was scheduled at this time because Zone Haven, working with its partners, had identified September as its official kickoff. And to start to have that conversation with the community. As we know from the last couple of weeks, the Zone Haven tool was thrust into use from the CZU Lightning Complex Fire by our friends at CAL FIRE. And the public's first real understanding of the system and its possibilities came from, I think, the news reporting, and actually, in some cases, information people received from evacuation notices in other places. So what we had intended to do is somewhat similar to what we're going to do tonight, which is to introduce as broadly as possible to the community what Zone Haven is, what it will do for us. I know that Charlie and Jeff are both prepared to answer questions about what actually happened during the fire. And then after this, our intention is to reach out to the community through a program called Know Your Zone. And Charlie and Jeff will describe the zones in town. But that's an important component of the usefulness of the Zone Haven tool. I would conclude my introductory comments by saying that this was a collaborative effort with all of the fire chiefs. And we have such a strong relationship with Chief Lindner. And he was gracious during that process to invite myself and my counterpart in Woodside to see earlier versions of the system. And we have, over the last month or so, been loading the system with valuable additional data that only the town can identify, so critical infrastructure and things of that nature. So with that, I will be quiet and turn it over to Charlie and Jeff.
Welcome.
Great, thank you. Very happy to be here. It's a very trying time. We did not expect to be this engaged this early. We were planning on a soft launch in September and a harder launch in October. And now this hit, and so our team's been working 24/7 to end up supporting this. We've been in the tent at CAL FIRE in Santa Cruz and the Scotts Valley. We've been working with the different GIS teams. We have brought in information from all the different counties. This fire happened to hit right on the border of three counties. So at one point, we had 134 zones that were under warning or order, and they were in Santa Clara, Santa Cruz, and San Mateo Counties. So we had a literal trial by fire to bring this thing forward. The good news is, we've been working with Jonathan Cox and with all the different sheriff, police, and fire agencies across San Mateo County. And Chief Cox and Chief Larkin from the CAL FIRE have really been advocates for this since the beginning. And so San Mateo County specifically is further ahead than any other county. We've gotten to learn with you, but at the same time, you guys are the ones that have everything in place and much more established. And now we have many, many other counties that are interested and are coming on board. By this, by this, the end of this fire season, we should have at least 12 counties total in the Bay Area that will be on board. So San Mateo County is a leader in this. And we are, we've been very lucky to be able to work with all the different groups. I'm going to walk you quickly through a general presentation that we usually share. We can, we can show some demonstrations. We can do other things as well, and we're happy to answer questions. So I'll share my screen here. Feel free to ask questions along the way. I'll give you a fairly high-level overview, and then we can jump into the details if there are any questions. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So wildfire problem today, things are, as we've seen, getting, the fires are getting bigger. Climate change is driving us towards having much larger fires. And firefighting, in many cases, is not that effective on the initial attack. You have to get it quick. But if the fire hasn't, if the winds are not in your favor, things can grow really quickly. Multi-agency coordination is required. We need to, no fire knows a jurisdictional boundary. So we need to have planning and relationships that are built long before the fire happens. And initially, these large wildfires become mass rescue and casualty incidents. The goal is to get people out of harm's way, because stopping the fire when it's deep in the forest is often a very difficult task. We've seen this with Shaver Lake and the creek fire that's happening. The fire wrapped around an area, and they had to evacuate 200 people with helicopters. It was, the goal was just to get people out of harm's way. The amazing thing is, Shaver Lake is over 150,000 acre fire, and there's not been any deaths at this point. So people are really figuring that out. Evacuation orders are required earlier and over larger areas. People need to be prepared to know that there's a warning, ready, set, and then go, get out of, get out of harm's way. We found that this year, at the CZU complex, there were some people that ended up staying behind. And it ended up, in some cases, becoming a rescue operation rather than being able to focus on fighting the fire. So really focusing on getting people out of harm's way. Traffic congestion is a huge deal, and vulnerable populations are really the most at risk. At the campfire, it was unfortunate, but the average age of the people who died at the campfire was around 71 or 72 years old. And so we really need to be able to address that earlier in the process. Many agencies are working on solving this problem. And the standard way that this stuff is done today is much more ad hoc. The approach for the last, you know, 100 years has been ad hoc evacuations. Show up, figure out where the fire's going, and at that time, start drawing zones and figuring out where you want to get people out of harm's way. Once you've done that, it may take you two hours, three hours, five hours. In the case of the Kinkade Fire, they had 40 hours until the wind event came, so they spent their time building their zones. And then they communicate it through radio, live meetings, messaging. You get it scattered from a lot of different places, and it's, in some cases, hard to know what source is the, is the source of truth. So we've been focused, and this is really, this is a slide I would say is, this is the Jonathan Cox slide. This is the vision that he has put forth and what we are executing against. So the goal for us is to be delivering a one-click platform that allows for multi-coordination. There's real-time map-based information for the agency responders. This isn't even talking about the community-facing portion. This is making sure we're making it easy for the agencies to coordinate. We're making real-time map-based information available. We're not replacing your existing tools. You've got great tools. You've got your community warning system. You've got other tools that are in the police car and in the, in the, in the fire, the fire apparatus. So we need to integrate with these existing channels. But we also need to work with folks like Jeremy and Chief Lindner and others to get the local knowledge in. Where are those gates that we don't know about? Where are there, where are large animals that need to be moved? Where are the facilities where there are people that need to be moved? So the goal here is to reduce complication and then provide that as a common, single source of truth to the communities. So this is the vision. We are in the process of building this out. We've been, we've been a company now for almost a year and a half. And we were preparing for this season, and the season came just a little bit early. So we've really, with this one-click platform, the goal is that everyone sees the same information at the same time. And so I'll show you very quickly a demo, but let me first say that our focus is, we are zone-based. So the key thing for us is that we've worked really hard to build out algorithms and processes for building what we call smart zones. These zones take into account historical threat. They take into account fuel and vegetation type. They take into account geography. They take into account the number of people and structures in a zone, different types of risk in a zone. And most of all, really, how easy is it for the, for that community to exit the zone? Is there more than one egress point, or is there only one egress point out? And the zones become incredibly easy to communicate. If you're in the field, you're on a radio, and you're saying, we need to get people out of zone 12, that's a lot simpler than saying, everybody north of Highway 101, east of a lake, and then down halfway through to the corner of these two streets. That's much more difficult. So very simply, it makes it easier to communicate. In addition, it allows us to plan together. So our agency partners are working with each other within your county, but they're also working with people in other counties. We're learning from San Luis Obispo County. We're learning from Sonoma County. And those learnings are being brought to this platform and are being, the collaboration is elevating the toolset. And it makes it easy for our agency partners to continuously learn from each other and to share with each other. So a little bit of information about what we just went through. August 8th, the first CAL FIRE news release went out. We had one zone under an evacuation warning. Maybe people should get out of the way. Within, within five days, we had evacuated or put under order 134 zones across three different counties. So this thing was incredibly fast. And because we had pre-planned the zones, because the agencies already knew the concept of where the traffic control points were going to go, it became a very smooth operation in terms of making the decisions. In the tent, the sheriff would show up with their zone map, saying, these are the zones that need to be evacuated. This is where we're going to put our traffic control points. This is how we're going to communicate it to the public. The minute that was done and announced, usually at 3:00 every day, the information was entered into the system by the, in the agency system, and then made available to the public in the public-facing application. So I'll skip that. Here's an example. This is actually our application at work. These were the zones here that were going to, in Santa Clara County, that were going to be put onto a warning. So they were able to select all the zones, figure out the population, acreage, number of structures that would be affected, make the change to what those zones would be, and then consistently communicate that through the news release, through the community site, and through other applications that the fire and law enforcement use. So we're focused on preparing, doing all the work upfront, training before the event happens, and then during a live event, putting that training to work and delivering that information to multiple channels. An example is Waze. Waze, whenever a zone is shut down, so if one of these zones here is shut down, Waze receives an alert. They have the zones as well, and they will redirect traffic around that zone in order to reduce any potential issues in that zone. in order to reduce any potential issues in that zone. So I'll quickly show you two things. One, the, I'll show you the operational app. This operational app, I'm giving you guys a peek behind the curtain. This is the application that is used by the agencies. This is not a public-facing portion of the app. So this is the, the app. It has in it, for example, real-time weather, 48-hour forecast for the, for the law enforcement. If you look at the satellite image, you can see real-time traffic. So they're able to look at where the traffic is. If they're interested in understanding number of people, they can click on one or two zones and they can get a total of the number of structures, the number of people, the number of acres. We can also turn on and start looking at traffic. So here's the amount, the number of cars or the number of structures that would be leaving and where they would be going if they were going on their shortest route. So here we would have about 512 potential cars hitting this if you were to evacuate this area. And there's a lot of information and details that are managed in the system that Jeremy had referred to in terms of putting in information like critical evacuation facilities, different routes, this kind of thing. And every one of these can then produce PDF maps that are available to be shared with the law enforcement. On these big events, you have thousands of people share, thousands of law enforcement and, and fire coming into your community. They don't know your community. How do we get them the best information possible, the most local information possible? We do that by getting that information into the system before the event happens. And then when they come, we can very easily share that information. Now, if we look over here, you can see the color of the zones. These were actual zones that were at one point under warning in the system or, or order. And so in blue here, these are zones that have been allowed to be repopulated. The ones that are in yellow are the zones that have been allowed to, they're, they're still under a warning because they're still danger. They were actually in the fire perimeter. And then red here are still closed to, to the public at this point. Pretty much every day, new zones are opening. Today, we opened, I think it was this zone. And there's a set of five in Boulder Creek that also opened up as well. And so every day, new zones are being, their status is changing. It's a very, very dynamic process, but we have a tool to do that. Now, when this information here changes, this is the public version of the site. So everyone has access to this and this has been available since the beginning. And, you know, the latest information is from today and you see the exact same set of zones. If I zoom in on the area here and we click on a single zone, I think the zones today that we opened up were in here, yeah, 20 and 30. It tells you now that this has gone to a warning. We're planning on delivering a lot more information through the community interface here. And, but that's something that will be coming in, in a, in a couple of months. But in that case, there'll be a lot more information for you to understand what routes you have, PDFs that you can download for as a community member, information on what to do during an evacuation, and ideally ways for the community to work with the local agencies and CERT teams to be running drills based on, on the application. So if you want to know your zone today, this application here is showing zones from the San Mateo County, Santa Cruz County, and Santa Clara County. But if you just enter in your address here, it will center the map and find the zone for your region. And I know we're looking here in Portola Valley. So you know, if you want to start understanding your zone, you can use this application to start doing that. And then we'll be working with really San Mateo County as a whole at different ways to communicate and help educate the public on the zones that are theirs as well as the different opportunities. Like I said, we're a fairly young company, so we're continuing to learn what works best. And I'll tell you that we've learned a lot over the last three weeks. With that, I'll, I'll pass it back to, to you, Jeremy.
Thank you, Charlie. Really appreciate it. So you can see the, the wonderful potential the tool has for the town. As I said earlier, we're spending time from a staff perspective, providing information through the chief to Zone Haven to, to help build this out. And, you know, the big due for residents, if you will, will be getting to know your zone. So that will be part of a broader set of communications that the town wants to put out in the coming weeks related to what we've learned from the fire and reminding people of all the great resources that the town already has on its website to these various issues. If, I have three questions from, it looks like actually two questions from people on the call. And we also have one hand raised. So I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. First off, does anyone from the council want to first ask any questions of Charlie or Jeff? Okay, I don't see any hands up. Oh, Anne, there you are. Okay.
Thank you. Charlie, one of the things you said that struck me, and I know that it was something that we were all dealing with throughout the, all the CZU incident time period. And that was the amount of information that was coming through. You know, much of it was redundant because we were getting the same messaging from different agencies. And then other pieces weren't as redundant. How, how are you managing that as you're going forward? I know you said you're planning to do a fair amount in this next generation. And I think that from my side, one of the things that'll be the most, if, if we can come to rely on Zone Haven and to have our residents understand that it is the go-to spot for all of these incidents, you know, I'm just curious as to how you're going to manage that so that we don't continue to have four or five duplication of messaging for each of the, each of the different messages. And there are a lot of, a lot of them happening, obviously, in an incident this active.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's going to be something we learn with you over time. We've even found during this event that, you know, the community won't be not eat, not, there's not one community warning system across an entire incident. You know, San Mateo County doesn't have a single community warning system. There are multiple systems. And so the key for us over time is that those different groups start to support and understand that we can have a single point of, of, of truth and a single point of, of contact. So I think it is going to, it's going to be a learning. People have to both start to trust the zones and start to trust Zone Haven, and so do the agencies, right? And so it's going to be a partnership over the next, you know, couple of fire seasons to make sure that we continuously get it better. What I will say is this fire and the communication that happened this time was way, way better than what happened even just last year at one of the, you know, at the fires. And it's improved even more. So I'm really proud of our, our, our fire and law. With and without Zone Haven, people are learning how to do this. It's unfortunate that we have to, but we are learning.
Thank you.
Charlie, could you turn off the share screen, please? Oh, yes. No problem. Thank you.
And John's got his hand up. John, go ahead.
Yeah. Thanks, Charlie. This is, it really looks great. I think this is the third presentation I've had of this. One, first one being about three or four months ago down at, in the county. And there are definitely some, you've come a long ways. It's looking really, really impressive. I did have a question though, since this is, has, relies on the internet, which take all the advantages and disadvantages of that. I know that the other day, Chief Linder was describing the first kind of unofficial rollout during the fires and so that there had been a thousand hits per minute on Zone Haven at one point. Wondering how, how prepared Sorry.
You're good. Just for a second.
Okay. Just wondered how prepared you guys are to deal with the likely overload that you're going to get.
Oh, well, yeah, it's a great question. And let's just say that we've, we've learned a lot and we feel like we have that covered now. So when we first launched the community site, like I showed on that, we had one zone. So we're like, no problem, you know, maybe we get up to four or five zones. This is not a problem, right? We had no idea at the time that we were going to get, I don't think any of us did at the scale that this, this thing would go to. You underestimated. We had at any one time between 2,000 and 3,000 people on the site at any one time, not just over a minute, but you know, actively on the site. And the site couldn't handle that once it got above about 1,000. So we may, it took us about four hours, four to six hours. We pivoted and we moved it to a server set and a, and a software that allowed us to, to scale. And then it ran smoothly after that. So we had, like I said, we were planning on launching the community version of the site in about two months. So we hadn't gone through all the testing, but Jonathan Cox and Ian Larkin said, can you please just do it? Right? We really want to make this happen. So we went for it. We stumbled, but then we figured it out and we continued and it's working to, to, going forward.
That sounds great. Thanks.
Okay. If there are no other questions from my colleagues in the council, I've got three questions in the Q and A window. I'll start with those. Emerson Swan is asking, is Zone Haven a statewide system or larger?
We would like it to be a statewide system, but at this point, it's county by county. And our main focus area is in the Bay Area. So we are covering most of the Bay Area. But I think after the, these fires and the, the, the value that, that the application is provided, we are optimistic and hopeful that, that we have the opportunity to bring this to other communities.
Okay. Another question. Does the traffic data require that the cellular network be operational?
The traffic, the traffic data on this application does require the cellular. But I think, John, you, you brought up the, I think it was you that mentioned that, you know, sometimes we lose power. So we have a whole set of hard copy and electronic maps that get stored on the, the machines for the, for the first responders or can literally be printed and put in their trucks so that they can go out and still identify what zone they're in and have access to the pre-plans and know where to put the traffic points and, and how to manage those. So we're all dealing with the fact that we're incredibly dependent on internet connectivity. But you know, our, our, our first responders are actually really good at using non, you know, non-internet connected services. And that happens a lot for them.
Okay. Thank you. Then you made a comment that you learned a lot in the past three weeks. This may be a longer answer than we have time for, but it's just the, Betsy was wondering if she, if you wanted to elaborate on what was important or what you learned of interest.
So I think I'll just throw out a, a couple of the, the, the items. It became very clear that having a single source of truth, to Anne's point, is incredibly valuable, right? And so getting, getting the same message out via all the different platforms was incredibly valuable. We had to do some of that manually, but in, in this round, it's going to be automated in the next round. But we really got validation for what those channels are. We personally didn't realize how much Twitter is relied upon. So we've actually upped our Twitter response and have, have been putting energy into, into that space. And then the other piece, which I think a lot of people don't quite understand, there's a reverse evacuation happening right now, which is the repopulation. And repopulation happens on a much grand, more granular scale than the evacuations because you have to bring people into neighborhoods where there's safety, where PG&E has cleared the, the, the lines, where Hazard's Materials has come through, where houses have been tagged, whether or not they're safe to enter. So it's a, it's a very different model. You use the same toolset, but there's different approvals. There's different people in the room making the decisions. And so we've learned a lot about the recovery aspect of, of an evacuation as well. So there's a lot more learnings, but I, I figured that those are two that might be of interest.
Thank you. Okay. One more question from Betsy. Comcast Wi-Fi was down in parts of town this past weekend. How does your communication work if people don't have their Wi-Fi in particular?
So like I said, we're all dependent on the Wi-Fi. So what we're seeing is that there are different, it's really the OES organizations that are figuring out how to do those communications. We can send the message to the community warning system. We can send the message via radio. We can send the message, you know, through, through a variety of different systems. But OES, in some areas, they're putting in speaker systems. Or they're saying, look, if you hear the klaxon, the de do, de do, of a car coming through your neighborhood, that means there's an evacuation warning. So a lot of that becomes education that needs to happen before the event so that if the internet is down, you know what your other choices are for getting that alert.
Okay. And does the population data for each zone come from census data?
It comes from a mixture of census data and then we have a few other data sources that we rely on. And then local agency folks can up, can add multipliers to that information just based on their understanding. So in some cases, a high school may have a, you, you want to run a scenario where a high school is having a football game. And so you want to say there's a lot more people in that zone for this scenario. And so we give our agency personnel the ability to set a variety of different scenarios. In addition, there's different numbers of people, usually pre-COVID at least, during the day and at night, right? People go to, go to their offices and then there's a lower population. So the census doesn't give you that. They give you a general population. So we do some work to refine that depending on the time of day or the event.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor just had, we, this is, these are the kinds of areas too, that we work with Zone Haven and making sure that the data they have in there is validated and the like. So the fine tuning is underway.
Makes sense. Okay. We have one comment, which is, it sounds like a great use for our town AM radio station, which, which I completely concur. Thanks, David. Okay. I see four hands up. I'll remind you the three minutes limits on speaking. Rob Shawstack is up first.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not really Rob and just using his machine. I'm Nan Shawstack. So yeah, I'm, you know, first of all, this is, Zone Haven is really impressive. I've done a lot of work with GIS and this is the most important application of a geographical information system I've ever seen. So hats off to all of you who've worked on it. Have a statement here. I've been a resident of Portola Valley for 32 years. I'm geologist. I've taught courses on earthquakes, earthquake safety and preparedness at San Jose State. And I am a member of the WPV CERT team. I'm really very extremely concerned that Portola Valley be as prepared as possible for any emergency earthquake, which is what I've worked on, fire, obviously, landslide and flood, or even the power outages as we saw last weekend. I think that the towns participating and the development and implementation of Zone Haven is a very important step forward. So as I said, I, my hats off to all of you who've worked on it. This is a very, very complex product and it's been literally tested by fire. So very good job. I'm also impressed with some of the new emergency resources on portolavally.net. Think everyone in town should go there and just sift through the menu and see what's there. It's, it's pretty impressive. But I think that we could, as a town, do a lot more to be ready for emergencies. I agree with the idea that was put forward in the July 21st letter from Portola Valley Neighbors United, PVNU, to the town council, that the town established a public safety officer who would be responsible for coordinating all the organizations that are now involved in emergency preparedness and evacuation, like the state, the county, the town government, all the volunteer committees, the fire district SERP, WPV CERT, WPV Ready, you know, the neighborhood emergency response teams. This town employee could also be responsible for communicating with the residents, both regularly and in emergencies. And we saw during the fire how important the town's communications were. Yeah, some of them were redundant. That's true. Yeah, some of them were redundant, that's true. But it was reassuring to know that there was someone there who was on the ball and watching all the time and and issuing updates every few hours. That made me feel pretty good. If a tight budget is an issue, which it may be, I know it's pretty bad this year, either reassign the duties of one of the current employees or have the new public safety officer do some fundraising and grant writing to pay for the new position. I think we can all agree that safety of the people of the town is of the highest priority. And I thank you for your time and I thank you all for your leadership, the Town Council, Jeremy, and the town staff. Thank you for your leadership in paying attention to safety here.
Thank you, Nan. Lori Duvall is up next. Lori, go ahead.
Sorry, nothing, nothing. Sorry, sorry.
You're good, Lori. That was my fault. I was a little slow on the draw.
Your fault. Okay, copy that.
Go ahead.
Jeff, Mayor Alf.
Yes, hi. Lori?
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Rusty is up next. Go ahead.
Thank you. Rusty Day, 178 Pinion Drive. I absolutely echo what Nan Shawstack had to say. I think it, first of all, this is an extremely impressive step forward. And it's remarkable to see what enormous improvement can be made in the coordination and collection of information to facilitate good decision making. I think it really showed in Cal Fire's handling of the CZU fire. I think it's very, very impressive. The comment I want to make about it is that I want to hear more from Charlie about the community facing end of this. And this also echoes, I think, Nan's comment. Looking at this from the perspective of first responders who are jumping into a critically chaotic, unknown and rapidly changing situation, I see how this has enormous value for them. But I want to look at it from the perspective of residents. I want to look at it from the perspective of the 4,500 residents of Portola Valley who are confronting an unknown, unknowable, inexplicable set of choices and challenges confronting them. And in that regard, some of the, some of the questions that come up, I think, most urgently and most importantly are, if a communication system like this is dependent on the internet, what about the residents who, A, aren't on the on the internet, and we have residents in town who are not? Or what is it, what happens when we have power outages? We had two last week. In fact, we had two in one day that lasted seven and a half hours. And I think it's the the question that I'm trying to come to grips with is, looking at this from the perspective of residents, not first responders, and organizing the information that residents need. For example, when Zone Haven posted the evacuation orders, and Charlie, perhaps you can speak to this because I don't want to get this wrong. I want to understand correctly. But what I saw is I was watching these, I was watching these in real time on a fairly regular basis, was that an evacuation order would be posted. And typically, I think most of them were posted over a very short period of time, covering a very large area. Tens of thousands of people were ordered to evacuate in, on a single release. But in San Mateo County, there was no instruction on direction. No instruction as to where to evacuate and how to evacuate, what route to take out of the zone that you were to evacuate from. And I saw a fair bit of comment on that on Twitter. In San, in Santa Cruz County, there did-
Rusty, you're at three minutes, so please wrap up.
Santa Cruz County, there did seem to be directions given for the evacuation orders. And I'm just wondering if you could speak to that in terms of, you you talked about, you know, in two months, we're going to have a community version of this or a community release. Can you, can you go into that in a little bit more detail for us?
Go ahead, Charlie. Thank you, Rusty.
Do I have time?
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah. Rusty, I appreciate your understanding of the problem. And so the, what I'll say is that the, in in the current CZU fire, the evacuation orders were coming directly from Cal Fire. We were managing the map portion, but we did not have control specifically of the content of the news release message. That was information that was generated by them. We see, and and it's a lot of information. It's definitely hard to consume. And I think we've learned some around how to make, how to make that easier for for them. In terms of giving people directions out of a zone, it's not always clear, especially during a fire, exactly which route is the best route out. So my, you know, and this is just me, not not Cal Fire saying this, but it's best for you to understand where the fire is and have a plan for potentially multiple ways out of your, out of the zone. What what Cal Fire did and and the other agencies involved, the EOCs, was they identified places to go. So they said, look, if you're in this zone, head to Pescadero High School. And Pescadero High School became the first shelter. Eventually, the fire overwhelmed that area and they had to close that shelter. But in the first couple of days, that was the target. So in most cases, they're going to give you a target for where to go, but they're not necessarily going to tell you exactly which route to take. Yeah.
Thank you. Mary Huffty, go ahead.
It has been to have a sheet of paper that was, that basically had, I mean, for the over 70 crowd, okay? We need to have the reassurance of a piece of paper that we have done what needs to be done at that stage and what is expected of us in terms of a rapid exit. And you're talking about the ability to go ahead and give a a piece of paper to your first responders. What are the chances and who would it come from of getting such a a single piece of paper to the residents?
I think, so we have a, what I will say is that we are doing, we have very clear plan and we're doing live research right now with folks in a variety of communities to understand what they're interested in in getting. So, you know, when you build a product, you build it by talking to the community and and getting that information. So we learned just from having this conversation with you. One of the things that we are looking at, these are ideas that we haven't implemented them, is that you would be able to download and print a, something similar to what you would see in a motel, right? In a motel, they say, you know, go this way to the exit. Well, for your house or for your zone, being able to print that, put that up on the wall and know, okay, if a fire happens and they tell me the fire is coming from the north, I'm going to take this road out. This is my plan. I am going to, whenever I come back to my house, I'm going to take a different route. At least once a week, I'm going to drive a different route than my normal route home. These are the things that we can help translate and deliver. And we're, there are cert communities all over the country who are doing this exact type of work today. And we want to get that information, try to call the best practices and make that easy for our residents to consume.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any more hands up. Jeremy, you wanted to talk briefly?
Yeah, I had just two very, very quick comments. The first two to Nan and to Rusty. Fortunately, the town has three public safety officers for the the price of one. Myself, Brandon DeGarmo, who is the assistant to the town manager, and Kerry Chin, who's our communications and community engagement management analyst, excuse me. We all have responsibilities and in some cases overlapping and backup responsibilities in all of these issues. And we coordinate across the board with our partners. And essentially, the way that the public safety officer concept was described, so to all those who are on this call, rest assured that that functionality is been part of what we do for many, many years. And with the hiring of Kerry Chin, having a dedicated communications person, I think, was adding the final element. The other thing I would say is, in some ways, the town is is fortunate in that there are only so many ways in and out that people need to understand exist. In a fire situation, that may not be an advantage clearly. But there are two major roads in and out of town. Arasidero is the third. It comes off one of those two. There's a few ways to get to those roads. So we're we're fortunate in that regard. And I think that it won't require much in the way of explanation or discussion with community members, particularly those who have lived here a long time, who have an opportunity to to drive these roads. So I'm I'm hopeful in that regard that there's nothing that looks like a steep learning curve. There's other communities that are much larger than ours that need to put out official maps that show many different routes because people don't drive those ways. And we'll see what we eventually produce, but I'm I'm confident that we're in pretty good shape from there. Thanks.
Okay. I just want to thank Charlie and Jeff for being here tonight. This is a presentation. I mean, this, it got introduced a little sooner than we all would have liked or hoped, but I do think it's it's a great step forward. I just want to point out that a lot of people here in town and with our partner agencies have put a lot of work with Zone Haven into making this the product it is. And I look forward to seeing it, hopefully not needed, but certainly available. So thank you again for coming and thanks for the presentation.
Great.
We will move on then to item number eight, which is update on the race and equity conversation. Is Jeremy starting or Marian or John?
I'll briefly starting and I'll turn it over to the subcommittee. Tonight's update is relatively brief. I think primarily what we'd like to do is just share a couple upcoming dates related to two of the three identified webinar community events. And I think with that, I'll just turn it over to Marian and John because they're the ones who've been working so hard on this in the last couple of months.
Okay. I would be happy to update you on our virtual events. On September 29 at 6:30 PM, we will have our virtual author event sponsored by the library with Dr. Jennifer Everhart, who's a social psychologist and a state professor who wrote the book Biased: Uncovering the Hidden Prejudice That Shapes What We See, Think, and Do. There should be marketing materials coming out, maybe tomorrow. The second event, we have not nailed down the date. We have seven panelists and moderator and all but two have responded that October 19 from 7 to 8:30 will work. So we're just going to have to hang on a little longer and try to get to those last two. I will remind you that this one is the Policing Town Hall Zoom. And the panelists and moderators are, Henrietta Burrows is the moderator. She is the founder of the East Palo Alto Center for Community Media. The panelists are Sheriff Carlos Bolanos, DA Steve Wagstaff, Captain Christina Corpus, Reverend Lori Carter Owens, who is the president of the San Mateo Chapter of the NAACP, Kevin Allen, who is an attorney on the Criminal Justice Panel with the San Mateo County Private Defenders Office. And he also organized the BLM demonstration at the San Mateo Courts with, I believe, public defenders, private defenders. And the last panelist is an up and coming young man who helped organize the BLM protests in Redwood City. And he is probably going to be elected to the Redwood City Council in November because he is in a new district and he does not have a challenger. But he insisted that the election go on. So I hope that we can get that date to you guys really soon because this will be a very interesting event. The other three, the other two, excuse me, events, I will explain to you. The third one happened by chance. I had reached out to Judge LaDoris Cordell to see if she would be a panelist on the policing Zoom. She said, let's chat about it. So we we talked on the phone. Just ignore that phone ringing. Wait, hold on. Okay. She said we should chat on the phone. So we talked on the phone. And the first thing she said to me is, I don't do panels. So I thought, well, that's kind of odd. I guess this will be a very short conversation. And then she went on to explain to me this webinar she had just done that week. And it was called Black Lives Matter: No More Happy Talk. And she did it with two other people, a professor from Jackson State University in Mississippi. His name's Robert Luckett. And he is a foremost authority on the modern civil rights movement, African-American history and American history. The other gentleman is Chris Bridges. He is a civil rights lawyer, an academic and a program manager at the Equal Justice Institute. He also does implicit bias training. And he's out of Oakland. And then, of course, Judge Cordell, who is a retired Santa Clara County judge, a former police auditor for San Jose and an American Bar Association legal pioneer, and she's out of Palo Alto. So I was very excited about this when she said, I will help you do this. And everybody said they can do it, except for Chris Bridges, because he was booked solid. So we are going to try to schedule it later in the year, November, or even if that doesn't work, because we're getting into the holidays, push it into January. And then the last event is in the conceptual stage. This would be a virtual event on the topic of residential segregation. I reached out to Felicity Behringer to see if she would help us, and she said yes after the election. I don't know if you all know Felicity. She lives in town. She's currently a writer in residence at the Bill Lane Center for the American West at Stanford. And she was a New York Times journalist for 28 years. This one, I don't think, will schedule to 2021. And if you're interested in this topic, I can recommend a webinar that is available for viewing. I watched it on August 27. It featured Richard Rothstein, the author of The Color of Law. And it is available on the Bill Lane Center for the American West website. I also wanted to mention one other item. I've been following Redwood City's work in diversity and they have been doing a number of things. And one thing that they've done is to commission an artist to paint an 800-foot mural that depicts chrysanthemums and Japanese farmers. I had no idea that there was a long history of Japanese immigrants in the early 1900s farming chrysanthemums in Redwood City. And this was a thriving industry until those same Japanese farmers were sent to the concentration camps from 1942 to 1945. I bring this up because we have a very nuanced history and we have an interesting, we have interesting history of immigrants in Portola Valley. And I was wondering if maybe historic resources and cultural arts might want to dig into that. I don't think they would suggest a mural because I don't think that's going to fly in Portola Valley, but there are a lot of other ways to depict our rich cultural history. So I am just suggesting that. And John agrees. Thanks. John, do you have anything to add?
I think you've covered most of it. I'll just reiterate that every Sunday, the demonstration is happening at the corner of Alpine and Portola Roads and discussions afterwards from noon to 1:00 in the Triangle Park. I think I see Kim Manucci Akker is here. She's the one who leads that. It's a really great thing. It's a really great thing to participate in. Unfortunately, I missed the last couple because of smoke and heat, but you know. Also, I'll once again mention all the great books that are out and are being recommended by our library. And I have, I think I've read six or eight of them so far. And it's just fascinating amount of material out there that some of the stuff that I've had inklings about over my, most of my life. But yeah, it's, it, some of it really hits you in the face and it's a wake up in a lot of ways. So I highly recommend Biased, White Fragility, How to Be an Anti-Racist, The New Jim Crow, The Color of Law. And if you want fiction, Nickel Boys, which has just been released. It's a Pulitzer winner. Fabulous, fabulous writing all around. So look forward to our events coming up. I think Mary Ann's descriptions were great. Hope they all come off the way we, the way we imagine. We'll see.
Thanks, guys. This is a really impressive, you guys are pulling together a lot of stuff here. So that's, that's really great to hear. I, I'd love to see what, what historic resources could pull up just in response to your suggestion. I'd love to see what they could find for our local heritage. So be very interesting to learn more about that. Any questions from Ann? Craig, do you guys have any questions for these guys? Oh, Ann, go ahead.
You're muted.
Yeah. Just one, and that was really to follow up because I know that, and I can't remember. It was the last meeting or two meetings ago when we talked about possible training for the council. And I was wondering if you had an update on that.
Are you talking to?
Yeah, to you and John.
Yeah.
I don't think we do, although I know.
We talked about some possibilities.
Yeah. If we are going to do it for the council and possibly other councils, I would be very interested in Chris Bridges' implicit bias training. He's a gentleman that we are hoping to honor. He does it for a lot of nonprofits, a lot of legal entities. And I looked at his client list and it's really impressive. I mean, these are, these are organizations that would only choose somebody who was honest and accurate.
I would still be interested in that. I assume everyone else would agree with that.
Through the chair, that's sort of on me because we do have some that are, have been identified. And I need to bring them back to council to make a choice and then schedule something, which is typically the hardest thing to do with your busy schedule. So more to come.
Okay, thank you. Rita has her hand up. Go ahead, Rita.
Thank you, Councilmember Winger, for asking that question because I'm the one that asked that question back in June, I believe. And my name is Rita. I'm one of the few African American residents, taxpaying residents of Portola Valley. And I'm still, my offer, it's nice to have books and it's nice to have outside people come and talk. But my offer for somebody to show up at my house in social distancing and have a cup of coffee to talk to me. And I'm sure there are other residents that you can, I don't speak for everybody of African American descent. But if you want to talk to me about how it is to be in this town, I'm, I'm open and I'm sure you know how to reach me. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other comments, then that was, oh, Kim, go ahead.
Hi, Kim Acker. I'm in Los Trancos Woods and I'm one of the co-leaders facilitating the discussion group on Sunday mornings. I want to suggest that the council consider going through a land acknowledgement process and creating a statement to be part of each of its council meetings. And I wanted to give a resource. This is something that I have done in a community of mine. And the U.S. Department of Arts and Agriculture has a campaign recommending, trying to get people to do this. In Australia, Canada, and New Zealand, this is a part of the, the United States is behind in doing this. And so there is a movement. This is a strategy for indigenous people to have people acknowledge the indigenous people who are on the land, acknowledge the land, which is part of their practices, and tell a little bit of the, the story behind what happened to that land. So that's another thing in this whole area of racial justice that I think could be systemically implemented as part of the council's work. I'll send the link to that campaign.
Great, thank you. Sounds interesting. Okay. If there's no other comments, then John, Mary Ann, thank you for, for your continued work on this and the update. And we'll move on. Item nine is our liaison and regional reports. Ann, why don't you start us off?
Jeff, would you skip me for a second and come back?
Yeah. John, go ahead.
Okay. I had, well, I had emergency preparedness meeting that covered a lot of the items that we've gone over tonight with Chief Lynder giving his report on the fires and talking about the, the Zone Haven efforts. And let's see, one item that I guess will probably be coming to us fairly soon is I think Brandy has been looking in and Jeremy both been looking into remote EOC software in order to be able to broaden our attack a little bit. And both would be probably usable whether or not we're in or outside of the, the standard EOC. And that I think, I'm looking forward to seeing what, what can, will come of that. Also, some discussion about ongoing efforts to set up the radio at the Cal Water Site, which I guess is moving along. And we just, we'll probably need to come up with some dollars to provide for phone and electrical access up there. But I think that's really promising. Other meeting was Conservation Committee. And let's see. Some discussion about work in the right of way. The Conservation Committee was very complimentary on it. We're kind of frustrated about the fact that we've been, it's been difficult to get our crews out to do work in Springdown and those, and other places that will, will need additional mowing. But that, I guess, will be coming when it, when it's possible. Bulk of the mowing has been done on the trails. Oh, there was some discussion about how to remind builders and owners that invasives that are often mentioned when they're, when they come in for a permit, that they need to be dealt with as, as construction continues. So that particularly on disturbed soil, things like stink work will come out and be a problem and needs to be dealt with long after the permits are issued and the work's been gone on for a year or maybe more. And they've, it's, it's become fairly apparent over around the town that there are construction projects that have not really done anything with that after the very beginning of the project. And will, as a result, have more of a problem afterwards and will probably spread it to their neighbors. So that's something that the Conservation Committee is going to be talking about and trying to come up with a, a good, good answer, how to, how to address that. It may be another, another handout for, for contractors, perhaps. Let's see. They are set up a new, new subcommittee to look at fire tolerant understory ground covers so that maybe some of these areas that have been stripped bare will still have some possibility of having some sort of native ground cover under the trees that won't add to the fire risk. And lastly, they have made an updated map of the plantings at the town center. It is now available. I guess there have been a few plants that died and a few that have been replaced. And that little, little brochure handout that shows a map with all the different types of plants that are available in town at the town center is again, ready. So that was it.
Thank you, John. Ann, are you ready to go now?
Yep, I am. Just to get my notes in order, sorry. The first of the discussions that occurred was back, I think we had four weeks in between meetings and really related to the whole pickleball discussion. And I know there's been, this is part of all the ongoing conversations we've been having on all the reintroduction and reopening of sports throughout the whole, all of our fields and, and courts. And that group is getting themselves, with the help, by the way, I would mention of Jeremy and staff, because it has created a huge amount of work for them to try and figure out how to safely reopen pickleball. But I think that they have pretty much at this point developed a model that will allow for the kind of oversight that's required in this COVID environment. And so, but it's, it's been a long sort of educational process. And I think it's been a positive one. And again, it sort of reflects some of the early efforts that we had in the, on the soccer side of things with all the drills that are going on right now with Alpine strikers. And so I think there was a lot of progress made. But I know that Jeremy and team have, and Brandy and others have really spent an enormous amount of time to try and start the next phase of reopening of some of our courts as well as clearly some of the fields. So stay tuned. I think that's going to be introduced relatively quickly now. I think it's in the final stages. Jeremy may update us. But that was a robust discussion, as it always is. 26th of August, we had a CCG meeting, Finance Committee meeting. And interestingly enough, that meeting was pretty much pro forma relative to the normal sort of county finances. But the interesting part of it was that there's going to be, and the next meeting in November, we'll have a discussion of the OPEB and some of the PEPRA and some of the areas that we've been looking at because certainly there were a couple of us in that group that said there may be alternatives to LEAF and the county fund, particularly for OPEB. Now, it was ironic too, that it's a relatively small amount for CCG because it's their staffing that we're talking about, not the county staffing. But again, it's sort of taking some of the lessons and work that we have done here and being able to even move it over potentially to some of the work of CCG. So that was probably the most, otherwise it's pretty much pro forma. Returns are as you would expect coming through on the two funds that they were principally invested in. And then the last was the 31st of August when we had the opportunity, the chair and myself met with Michelle Rodriguez, who's the new San Francisco Roundtable Coordinator. And that is a really positive situation in that she has a huge background in, has served with different roundtables and different groups as well. And a big, big background and sort of this type of planning and working with groups such as this one, which is multi-jurisdictional. And she's going to be a great asset, very, very proactive. So that was an exciting meeting. And I think everybody's pretty excited to have her on board because that group can always use new talent and new energy. And that was it. Thanks.
Thank you. Craig, you're up.
Okay. See, the main one that I had was, we had a special BPS meeting on September 2nd where we, they spent a good deal of the meeting. And it was well advertised to the public, talking about Willowbrook and Alpine Parking, Windy Hill and other overflow parking from our trail systems. And how, you know, what, there was sort of a very short-term immediate thing in the early stages of COVID. But now as the months have gone on, it's settled into a little bit of a different pattern, but still one that involves substantial amounts of parking many days of the week on Willowbrook and Alpine and Portola Roads. So they got a lot of input from the residents on Willowbrook, especially the ones who are at the end where there's more parking problem and also the ones near the pinch point where there's the island in the middle that makes it difficult for traffic to flow through. And they really got into a lot of the issues that they have with how the parking works. None of them were asking to ban parking or try and push the problem somewhere else, which was very nice to see. It was really a very constructive meeting about, you know, how could you do a limited amount of curb painting or other signage or whatever else to improve sightlines, but not force people to not park there essentially. So shift, shift exactly where they park around a little bit to make it safer. And I think Howard, I'm not sure Jeremy may know if he's been out there and actually done some curb painting already. But he seemed to think that the solutions made sense. They'd be fairly easy to implement and he could take some of them fairly quickly. And then I think there may be some more that the committee is going to digest and probably talk again about at their next meeting about other possible solutions and seeing kind of how that first round of things shakes out. But by and large, it's sort of, you know, there are a couple driveways where painting a couple feet on either side of the driveway would be a big help, especially for seeing cyclists who might be bombing down the hill suddenly appearing from behind parked cars. And if you're pulling out of your driveway, it could be a really bad situation. So I think it was a very productive meeting and gave the committee a good idea of kind of what some of the issues are and Howard as well. Give everybody a good opportunity to kind of get together and talk about it.
Craig, did you want me to share some additional information now?
Sure, yeah, if it makes sense to.
Sure. So a few things, Ed Hall, the chair, Howard and I had a conversation, I believe it was today. Can't keep the days straight anymore. In regards to this and next steps, what we're going to do is we're not going to assume that everyone wants the red painting on either side of their driveway. So we're going to send a letter to all of the Willowbrook residents in front of the median as, as you would approach it from Alpine and ask if they'd like this, us to paint. There's typically a nominal charge associated with this, but we're going to waive that because this is a pretty extraordinary circumstance that's caused this. And I see that Betsy Morgan-Daylor is on here. She's come to one of our meetings who had an issue on Portola Road. If there's opportunity to do something similar, we'll, we'll extend that to some of the properties there as well. So Betsy, I'll give you a call in the next couple of days to see if that makes sense there. And I don't know if it does or not. The other, the other piece of this is I'm going to reach out to MRO SD, Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District on Friday and talk to their general manager, give them an update on what's been going on and continue our conversation about potential broader solutions to the parking issues that we've already begun. Any, any ideas that come out of those initial conversations will be vetted through committees and ultimately to the council. So that's my update. Thank you.
And that was it. I had a Trails Committee meeting a month earlier, but I've lost my notes from that one. It was mostly just updates on trails, trail conditions. I think there were some questions about possible signage on a couple trails for clarifying mixed-use stuff. It's about all I recall from that meeting.
You got it right. The other thing I would add is Sequoia's Trail.
Sequoia's Trail reopened.
Has been reopened, although it's been spotty off and on. We were planning to reopen it the week the fire started and with that. As I think some people know on this call, the trails actually close to the public Tuesdays and Wednesdays to allow Sequoia residents to walk on it without any disturbances. So I really want to thank Gary Hanning and the volunteers from the Trails Committee who are actually managing the opening and closing of that trail since the capacity wise, we weren't able to do it from a staffing perspective.
And that was it.
Okay, thank you. Mary Ann?
I have two reports. The first was a San Mateo County Express Lines JPA Board meeting on the 14th of August. There was a presentation and update on the actual project. And things are going pretty much as usual, although they had a little bit of slip back because of COVID, including some crew members who contracted COVID, but they're still pretty much on schedule. There was a presentation on the Equity Study for the Express Lines Project. There is now, there's a consultant, Autumn Bernstein with ARUP, leading the committee. There is, hold on. They're, they're going to do a pilot equity study. And they will, they have made a little group called the Equity Study Advisory Committee that, which will have a total of six meetings.
that, which will have a total of six meetings and the feedback will come to the J P A and they're going to deliver baseline conditions and a needs assessment report. The Pilot Equity Program and a guiding doc with vision and outcomes. How to define and measure equity. How to create the methodology, how to answer questions. The third item was a, a letter from the M T C asking us to support the Bay Area Express Lines Performance Strategies as included in Plan Bay Area twenty fifty draft. I will translate that. M T C wanted us to sign off on this letter. San Francisco, B A, Santa Clara County, Alameda had signed off on it. It's a long range document. It's like a thirty-year document. But it was kind of a form letter and there were a lot of us that felt very uncomfortable with a lot of the things that they were asking us to agree to. For example, hard to remember this stuff. There was a stipulation that Okay, so for instance, they say if you have to convert a lane from a general purpose lane, then you are going to suffer the penalties and we may have to do that. So that's done in our best interest. There was also a stipulation that we, if they're going to do a study and they think the study, they think the study will prove that all toll lanes are the way to go. Who knows if that's the way to go? That could be a very difficult proposition in Samatello County, and we didn't want to agree to that. And there were a few other things. So it was a very long discussion, but in the end we wrote our own letter. See, and the last item was a review of the long time coming agreement between the J P A and the T A for the one hundred million dollar loan. And there was just one little piece that was still not acceptable by everyone. And it had to do with means-based tolling and how that affected the payment back of the loan because means-based tolling means you have less revenue. But in the end, we worked out a compromise. Okay. And the other meeting I had was the Resource Management and Climate Protection Committee meeting on August nineteenth. They gave us an update on Samatello County Energy, Energy Watch twenty twenty to twenty thirty. Let me see if there was anything in here that was of interest. The only things that are a little different this time is that they are they've got a lot of interest around adaptation, equity and assumptions-based inventory, which is different. There was a presentation on regional and local projects focused on existing si- single-family home electrification. So the, and I think we all know a lot about single-family home electrification. There are a lot of efforts around this right now. One thing that they were thinking of doing was to have a residential, residential electrification case studies where they would do ten homes. And there would be cost estimates for whole house retrofits and individual systems like water heating, space heating, cooking, et cetera. And those could be a diversity of homes. I mean, you could do a home in East Palo Alto. You could do a home in Samatello. You could do a home in Daly City. So I thought that was an interesting proposal. And that is going to go to Bayren and we'll see whether they'll spend it. And I just have to say, Jeff, I'm always impressed by the work that P C E is doing around equity. It's amazing because Donna Colson, who is on your board, sits on our board and also Galia. He's on your board.
Yep, Rick is, yep. Yeah, it's been a board focus for, I mean, we, it's always been an important thing for, I mean, all of us really.
It's really nice because, you know, having worked sort of in sustainability since two thousand and six, this was not the case when we started out. Nobody ever thought of the people who live on the other side of the tracks. It was pretty much a you know, middle-class, rich, white person thing. So I'm really happy to see how it's evolved.
Yeah, everything that, everything that comes out of pollution falls unevenly.
Absolutely. The people who are the most vulnerable are the ones who live on the other side of the tracks, close to the freeway in the land that was polluted. Yeah, okay, I will stop. So the next item was okay, there were two items by Doug Silverstein, resident of Burlingame, who's on our board, representing the nonprofit Thrive. He had a proposed course for elected officials to take on sustainability concepts and policy trends. And while we thought it was very interesting, we told him that it would best be offered as a menu of choices, you know, or Saturday marathon and include things like localized case studies, politically difficult projects that show how a community did it. You know, learning from experts. And again, environmental justice and social justice had to be the thread that run through all the modules. And then his last presentation was on the climate and water quality impacts of single-use plastics in Samatello County. And I'm sure we've all seen these striking statistics. Oh, you know, while we were talking about this, he brought up the Samatello County Ordinance for Disposable Food Service Ware. And seventeen jurisdictions have not put this on their agenda. Did we ever have it on our agenda, Jeremy?
I believe we did.
But we did not adopt it because only Atherton, Burlingame, Samatello and County in South San Francisco. So let's, you and me and Jeremy and Andy thinking caps to get it on the agenda. Anyway, he, you know, he talked about stream costs, the consumption costs in Samatello County to restaurants, resident schools, the downstream costs. You know, all the stuff that goes in the storm drains and ends up in the ocean. And then his, you know, had a lot of steps they're going through right now. He did mention recycling is not a solution anymore, you know, and as you know, I think eighty percent of our recycling goes to landfill. Some amazing number. Yes, two percent of all plastic is actually effectively, you know, recycled, eight percent is downcycled. Eighty to ninety percent is going to landfill and incinerated and to the ocean. And if you've been to Indonesia, you will smell it incinerating. He says you have to, you have to stop the upstream piece. And then our last presentation was the County of Samatello's COVID Strategic Plan and Recovery Initiative. And I, it was interesting, but I cut her short because I refuse to let the meeting go past four. So if anyone is interested in that, I can get you the slides and you may make comments. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Just thinking about one thing you said with the electrification case studies, P C E funded a pilot program where we're going to electrify, I think, five houses. I'm going to, I will, I will try to follow up and see what became of that because I don't remember ever hearing a whole lot about it and I'll, I'll get back to you because it's, it'd be good to compare notes on that. But thank you. I'll see. The one thing, I guess the one thing I have, I haven't had a lot of meetings in town the last few weeks, but just today, Pennsyl Clean Energy had a meeting of just a subcommittee of the board. We are approaching the town of Los Banos in Merced County to join P C E. We, we were, we are trying to offer them sort of a seat on the board in addition to P C E. Los Banos is the home of the Wright Solar Park, which was our first, our first big newly built solar facility in Merced County. Believe it was the largest, largest solar project in California that was fully financed or fully taken, off taken by one C C A. So that has been up, been operating since last December. Los Banos, because it's located near there, wanted to take advantage of the energy coming off of that. And we're, we're now trying to see if we can come with a way for them to participate in, in P C E, which I think would be a really interesting way to sort of transmit some of what we're doing here to an, an, an area inland. And they seem to be very interested. So that's the one thing that's happening right now with, with Pennsyl Clean Energy. Oh, and I actually, Sunrun came to my house and I'm right in the middle of getting an assessment to get a solar plus battery system put on my house, which is part of the P C E program where it becomes part of our resource adequacy. Basically, the, the, some of our, it becomes part of the backup power required to provide by state regulation. So I'm actually wishing I had that battery in place now. So if anyone's, if anyone out there is thinking about batteries and storage now and they don't have solar on their roof right now, Sunrun is, is, is happy to come out. I, I had somebody at my house in two days. So they're, they're, they're very interested in this right now and it's it's, I think, oh, it's a way to back up your house, put solar on and actually help the community out with, by, by your battery becoming part of a sort of a community resource. That's all I have. In that case, we can move on to the manager report, Jeremy.
Thank you, Mr. President of the Council. I have a fairly lengthy report tonight, so my apologies in advance. I want to start with Anne's comments around pickleball. We're anticipating that the pickleball starts up under club group rules for the All Sports Court on, by about September fifteenth or so. We're hoping there's a few details that are still being worked out. And I'll actually anticipating an update from staff tomorrow. But we're excited to be able to offer that additional resource to amenity to people. I want to thank council members, Wanger and Hughes for their time that they've spent with staff working on the website update. This is something that's been near to dear to staff for some time. And there's the, the subcommittee has picked the look and feel of the design of the new website presentation. So some very intense work begins for staff over the next couple of months where we go through every item that's on the website, determine whether it will stay on the new website, needs to be changed, needs to be deleted, or whatever new materials need to go on. So all staff will participate in that process over a period of time. We're not going to wait to get the website up before that's completed. There's a certain threshold of materials that we'll put up and and then we'll continue to update throughout a determined amount of time to get that going. Wanted to just share a few thoughts on the C Z U Lightning Complex Fire Experience. The first is it related to communications? What we had in place worked pretty well. And I'm very delighted at, at that. It's nice to have something on paper. It's a whole other thing to actually try it out and see if it, if it works and really appreciate all the feedback that we received from residents related to the, the communication. A few things that we had determined in our planning for such eventualities is first, we, we do put out communication that's fairly repetitive, but we want people to hear the same information again and again, if it's still relevant and sort of get that in everyone's heads, if you will. Secondly, the line of communication between my staff, the Woodside Fire Protection District and the town of Woodside, who was involved in this as well, was outstanding. And I, I know that not everyone in town wants to hear from staff on issues like this, but they certainly are happy to hear from the chief. So we were delighted that, and we had decided this early on that it made a lot of sense to have quotes where available from him. So I really thank the chief. They were very long days, as you can imagine. We were up at five thirty in the morning and we were usually working till eight, eight or nine o'clock that night. Trying to disseminate information as much as we could. I also really appreciate Captain Christina Corpus's heavy involvement in conversations around, you know, if we had to go down the route, what would evacuation look like? The plans we have in place, do they make sense? So her thoughtfulness really meant a lot to us. The three other sort of fire-related ideas or, or power-related ideas, I kind of put them all in one bucket. Over the weekend, it was obviously incredibly hot in town. Power was going out and we would love to be able to provide cooling stations where possible. Our facilities don't really allow that. Our, our community hall doesn't have air conditioning, for instance. So I'm talking to some other community partners right now when at least one seems very interested in providing that amenity should be needed in the future. So I'll let you know how that goes. We hope to, in the future, provide that. Secondly, I want to just give a quick update on our fire mitigation efforts. I hope people over the last eleven months have seen the fruits of that labor. There's been considerable, considerable work on Alpine, Portola, West Ridge and other roads in town that have either a relationship to evacuation routes or emergency infrastructure like gates that will continue for the foreseeable future. Finally, the wildfire preparedness committee, one of its major recommendations out of its work from late last year that was adopted by the council in December was to update the town's building code to reflect home hardening efforts. So think vents, wood shake roofs and the like. That effort is underway. We are working with a, a building official that we consult with to help us prepare this. I'm taking an update meeting on Friday to hear more about where we are. Our goal, which seems entirely achievable, is to have this to council for a vote by the end of the year. This is pretty exciting. There's really two components to it. One is for new construction. We'd be looking at a half a dozen home hardening updates. The, the committee did not recommend such such updates for existing properties. They want to update their own properties, but we're writing it to include them. And we're going to bring that through the bodies to see if that's where the planning commission, the council and the Welfare Prep Committee want to be. We just thought that was prudent at this time. I wanted to give an update generally on the bills that are in front of the governor and a few bills that didn't make it to the governor's desk around housing that I thought would, would be germane to the council. I'm pulling up my notes here on that. There were three significant bills that died this year. Either they didn't get out of committee or they didn't get to the governor. I think the one everybody remembers was S B fifty and versions of that. There were two other bills that didn't get out the last day. One was S B eleven twenty from Senate Pro Tem Atkins, which was, would have allowed duplex zoning and single-family zoning areas that didn't, that got out of the assembly, but it didn't have time to get to the Senate. Senator Skinner had a bill, S B ten eighty-five that would have, among other things, not allowed cities to charge impact fees for new construction. That didn't get out either. But there are a couple challenging bills that got to the governor's desk that I wanted to gauge the council's interest in whether you want me to bring back a letter on, on these issues. The first is A B seven twenty-five. I think this is commonly known as a missing middle bill. This city, excuse me, this bill would allow and require cities through its regional housing needs allocation process, R E N A, to plan for more duplex and triplex housing. If I may quote the bill, it would do this by requiring at least twenty-five percent of the jurisdiction's share of the R E N A need for moderate and above moderate income housing allocated to sites with zoning that allows at least four units of housing with moderate income sites being capped at a density of a hundred acres or more. That, that part isn't germane to, to our community, but it would see an increase in density. The, the second bill is that A B sixty-nine, which is actually increased opportunities for loans and funding for A D U's, which has been a missing chunk to A D U production. Because it, it has been more challenging to get funding for, for that type of housing. I think that that's I think that's an objectively positive bill that the council may want to send a letter to the governor encouraging his support and signature. But A B seven twenty-five will have an effect on the town. So through the chair, I'd like to agendize for our next meeting, a conversation more in depth around this bill and, and see what the council would like to do. I think we have the opportunity really to discuss it too. I think we have the opportunity really to discuss it too much in depth tonight. Mary Ann?
Well, I hear you, but I don't know how we could react to that bill until we see our arena numbers.
Right. And that process is ongoing. We haven't received any formal numbers at this point, but you know, I can say informally, the numbers are quite a bit higher than we're used to. Our current arena number is 64. You know, early estimates are above 200 for arena numbers. That's a quadrupling, maybe even higher. So those won't be formally announced and then we'll have, for a number of months. And then we'll have an opportunity to go back and speak with. Their regional planning body about whether we want to see modification to that or not. So. That's where we are there. Then. Few other items. There's a new executive director to the San Francisco Cusco Creek Joint Powers Authority who I'm going to be meeting with on Monday. I don't know much about her, but I'm looking forward to hearing about her new role. Many of you have met the town's intern, Brandon Alvarez, and they and I have been working on, among other things, the creation of a teen committee. The town does not have an official mechanism to hear from youth voices. We are very fortunate to have in a few of our committees, those to have youth participating, but a body for teens run by teens. Is something that's near and dear to my heart. And we've had some really great communication so far with the library, the priory and the Sequoia Union High School District, who would help make this sustainable, if you will. So I hope to. Announce more in the coming weeks and bring something to the council. And that concludes. My report. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Jeremy from the council? Okay, Christie's got her hand up. Christie, go ahead.
Hello?
Yep.
Oh, I was just wondering, Jeremy, if you could give us some feedback on how AB 2345 would affect Portola Valley?
You're muted, Jeremy, or?
Hold on just a second. For those of you who know I have cats, that is not my cat. That is the mayor's cat.
Sorry.
And my apologies, I'm just pulling up my notes. So. To some extent, it's, it, it's not. I don't have a definitive answer and Cara may have some thoughts on this, not to put you on the spot, but I don't have a definitive answer for exactly how this bill's going to affect us. So for those who don't know anything about it, it's, essentially it increases density. And the bill. Make sure it got out. Yep, it did get out on August 31st. And I'm just pulling up the analysis. I'm sorry, I hadn't, I wasn't prepared to speak specifically to this bill tonight. So the bill does a number of things. So it grants, it allows, it requires a city to grant a density bonus based on a particular formula. For certain housing developments that have five or more units. And then you need to meet a certain set of criteria within the development itself. So it can be any one of these. Different percentages of total units for different levels of income. So for example, 10% of total units are housing development and lower income, 5% in very low and the like. There's some opportunity to allow. Excuse me, to, to do away with certain parking standards depending on the type of project. The, so it really depends on what kind of proposal the town would potentially get under AB 2345. So it's hard for me to say exactly what. An effect would be without knowing what kind of project would be potentially proposed. Cara, do you have any thoughts on this or am I just putting you on the spot?
You know, this, this particular bill has not been on my watch list. And it hasn't been touted as a new development in density bonus law, which leads me to believe that it's probably a cleanup to last year's. 100% affordable. Density bonus provision, which was a new substantive development. That gave additional, it allowed 100% density bonus for projects that. Had deed restrictions on all of the units. So in other words, if a nonprofit developer were to build, say 10 units, then they could get 100% density bonus for those units. So my sense is that this new bill. Has some cleanup changes because density bonus law is very complicated and it's very unusual that the legislature gets it right the first time. You typically see a couple or, or three additional follow on bills with, with cleanup changes. I, I will look, look at this more closely and report back to the council and public.
I would also add to the chair that some of these, some of the scenarios that I've seen, the bill could be. Applicable to or not scenarios that I would anticipate being part of the development in, in Portola Valley. So within a half mile of transit, like as far as I know, they don't define it as, as our bus stop. There's some increases to density bonus. But it has a relationship to de-restricted affordable homes. We don't do that in town. So. I, you know, my, my cautious answer would be, I don't see that it would have much in the way of application. But again, it just depends on the kind of project you see. Okay, thank you, Ms. Mary.
Yes. That brings us to digests. August 13th. Anything to pull? Okay. August 20th. August 27th. And August 4th. All right. Christie, do you have your hand up again or is that just from, do you have a question you just asked? Nope, okay. All right. If there's nothing to pull from the digests, then I believe we are all done.
Good night, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.